Second.
Okay.
All right, we are live, it's ten oh one AM, I'll open the special Board of Commissioners meeting for Fire District twenty-one. Called to order, and roll call, I'm Bruce Ansel.
Rich Bosman.
Uh Fisher.
Kimberly McMurray.
Um Jason's here, um just John Crawford is out of, out of state, out of town, um so he is excused. And we have special guests today, Chris Fawcett, Kathy Berg, Scott Brown, and of course Chief Ward is here as well, thank you. He's taken over my old office there. All right, so um we're here hopefully briefly to talk about the finalization of our levy lid lift proposal. Um and I, and I guess just to start off, I, I just want to update the board on levy lid lift issues, there was some concern obviously of where we were lining up with District Four, and yesterday at their special meeting, um they rescinded their previous resolution and adopted a new one that lines up more consistently with what we're doing, a dollar forty-five, going to zero out their EMS levy and drop the multiplier, and actually as a show of good faith, run a one-year levy lid lift um to give us assurance that they are ready, willing, and able to move forward with the RFA process again, and re-negotiate an inter-local agreement for service for that twenty-twenty-two year. Um so everything has been super encouraging, I applaud new Board Chair Mark Land for his leadership, um and I'm just hoping that we can get a good positive message out um to both fire districts, um and, and move forward on this levy lid lift proposal. So with that said, I think basically we, we have some documents that were in our packet, we have the resolution which was already passed. If you haven't checked or seen it on our website, there is a levy lid lift information page that's been posted, and, and Kathy, you're here, so I, I sent you an email, sorry, it was kind of late last night, I had, I had drafted that and then walked out of the room and didn't send it. Um but it, it basically gives you the information where you can go to the county to get the form that you will need in our upcoming discussion here, um as well as the levy lid lift tab um has those facts and information that I told you we would be working on, so, and Scott, that's information for you too as well, so um. Chris is, I, I guess I'm gonna go to you, Jason, unless you want to say something first, but uh um I know you're kind of here to keep us apprised and on track, and maybe you can just hum a few bars about where we are, and hopefully we're not missing anything right now.
Sure, Chief, do you want me to just jump in?
Sure, go ahead.
Great, so hi, everybody, I, I think I've met most of you, but I'm Chris Fawcett, and we're supporting your communications team regarding the public education around the levy lid lift. It's really positive to hear that District Four is much more aligned, and we're gonna update the webpage to kind of reflect some of those messages about looking forward toward the RFA as well. Um the information that was up there prior was before their alignment. Um the webpage that is up right now is really kind of just the basic story, uh but we are working on an FAQ that we're planning to put up next week, so we'll continue to build that webpage out with more and more information, and it'd be really helpful to hear from all of you, questions that you might be receiving from folks, so that if there is some consistency or we're hearing a lot of the same thing, um we'll want to address it directly. Um in addition to that, we want, we want to get the basic information up, we are also developing some other basic materials that are consistent with the facts that are on the webpage, and kind of information card that the commissioners can have, the firefighters can have, that gives the basic information and drives people to the website for more. Um reminder that you as a public agency, public entity can educate but not advocate about this, um so all of the materials are running through Richard just to make sure that we're not doing any of that, we're real careful about it, but we can tell the facts about it. Um so we'll have some other basic materials, a PowerPoint deck for going either virtually or if there are in-person opportunities, safe in-person opportunities for the chief to provide information. Um so we're kind of in the works of preparing all that. The district also has a newsletter, a monthly newsletter that goes out essentially the first of the month, and so that will be a good opportunity to also provide information and essentially kind of launch the effort, the education effort. Um you guys are also allowed under the PDC to do one district-wide, district-wide mailer, which we'll begin preparing, but you'll want that to hit when the ballots hit, so that it's timed kind of around the same, same time that people are getting their ballots. So we're, we're in the early stages of preparing some of the information, but we'll have a lot of that ready, I think, by next week, since you're on a pretty tight timeline. Um really would love to hear from all of you about opportunities that you know are existing in the community for us to share informations. Oh, Kathy is raising her hand. I love it, Kathy.
Um I don't know if you know what I do, I have a very large email um group that I send to all the time, and would you keep me in the loop of what you're doing, so I can understand what your, your strategy is and how I can help you, and get a call of you if there's something comes up that, that I have questions about, so.
Absolutely, and your reputation precedes you, I've heard all about you.
Okay, well, let's work on this together, okay?
Yeah, no, those kinds of existing networks where we can provide the factual information about the ballot measure, and you can hit send, are greatly appreciated. Of course, entities outside of the district can advocate either for or against, but we can share facts about the measure so that, because we want people to understand so that they're able to make a decision, you know, come, come primary day, so absolutely. Um so Kathy, maybe um it, it sounds like you've got this large email, but you also sound like a good resource of information for potentially other ways to share information. And others on the call, commissioners, you know, if there are chambers or homeowner associations or church venues, places where people generally get information, then we can ask them to share facts about it, um and get, get the word out, and then always driving people to the webpage for more or to reach out if they have questions. Um so we're trying to pull together, for lack of a better term, especially during COVID, a speakers bureau, you know, generally we would try and get on the agendas of these groups that are meeting and give them a short presentation and be there to answer any questions. Some of them are still during virtual meetings, so we'll do that as best as possible. Um and the goal here is to really just try and be a resource for information and, and push it out there, so people have facts.
I'm working with Dora Lee, and she's the um, she's the mouth of the Chamber of Commerce. Yeah, so that's, that's another, you know, and they have, they have a um, an email list that they send to on a weekly basis of what's going on with the chamber, so we need to talk to, you, you need to talk to Dora Lee about, um I'm, I'm taking charge of the um for, for and against thing, um because I have a hard time finding my words these days. They, they exist, but I can't always get them right when I need them. Dora Lee doesn't have that problem yet, though she's the same age as I am, it's not fair, but um, um yeah, Dora Lee is, is a good mouthpiece, I, I'm better at doing it on, you know, online type stuff, rather than trying to just go off the cuff, she can, she can get all those details of right away, so.
That sounds great.
That's where I'm at.
Yeah, that sounds great, thank you, and, and we have, we've developed a kind of timeline plan that we can plug in all these activities, so we're keeping on track, and the chief and Heather and Karen and I are meeting on a regular basis just to kind of look ahead for opportunities, again, not advocacy but education. Um so we really want to just make sure that we're getting enough information out there so that your residents and businesses can, can make an educated decision on the ballot.
Yeah, they, they have a, I think, a weekly, or every other week, um, online, you know, doing this, um.
There's a chamber chat they do also.
Thank you, you got it.
Great.
So let, let's talk to, keep Dora Lee in the loop and, and uh, yeah, that'll work great.
That sounds great, thank you so much. So that's kind of in a nutshell, but, but others, please also share information with the chief or myself, um we can make sure you, that you have my email address and phone, um so that we can, so that we don't miss opportunities to provide information.
Yeah.
Can, can we um hit the Blaine City Council um with our information? Do we, do we have a venue avenue? I know that I used to go to their um regular meetings when you could go in person. Um can, can we set up something with them to, to let them know, since, I mean, City of Blaine, we are their fire department, so um it would be nice to at least inform the city council what's going on here.
Yeah, you can absolutely give folks information, and then, you know, they might post something on their website, we can give them some verbiage that again says like, you know, this is coming to us on our August third election, here's our website. Um I don't know, Chief, you may have somebody we can work through, a staff person at the council, to make sure that information.
Right now, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good, those are all, I mean, you want to think about those various types of groups, right? There may be, I don't know, a recreation group or something, just where there is some sort of um gathering of folks, not necessarily in person, but a, a communications tool to reach memberships. We want to be as thorough as possible, again, to provide some information, so people aren't surprised when they see this on their ballot and don't, don't know about it.
Right, I mean, we, we need to reach out to the Simiamu Homeowners Association.
Yeah.
Um especially if we're planning to add that aid car up in their neighborhood station, which I think would be very, a, a very welcome addition for that community. Um there's, uh, of course, I'm, I'm thinking locally here where I live, but we've, we've got Kathy Berg, who's the mayor of Birch Bay, we've got uh um Dora Lee, who is, is with the chamber for Birch Bay, um we've got the village, Birch Bay Village here, which um probably receives our services almost on a daily basis, uh we've got Simiamu, uh we've got the Blaine Council, there's also the Blaine Senior Center, which um we should probably reach out to them as well, because I'm, I'm sure, in fact, I've, I've seen our rigs there doing blood pressure checks and also attending to people up there with emergencies, so it's, I, I think there's some good pockets, concentrated pockets of voters that'd be nice to get that message out to.
Yeah, those, those are great ideas, those are perfect ideas, and if we can think across the whole district as well, that would be help, really helpful, and again, if we can tag on to existing channels, that's the easiest way to do it, places where people go to get trusted information already, that's the easiest way to do it, and then of course you'll have your one mailer that you can, you know, send across the whole district.
Right, and Kimberly, you and I had sort of exchanged information before, um now that we have that up on the website, does that give you the information you're looking for to reach out to your folks? Sorry, you're muted.
I know, I lost connection.
Yeah, sorry.
Technology's not my friend, always. Um yes, I will go review that, and I have a long list of people to reach out to.
Oh, that's great. Um and Kimberly, again, we, we wanted to get something up on the site, so it's pretty, you know, it's sort of the basic stuff, we're, we're digging deeper with the FAQ, and again, that should be up probably by mid, next week at the latest.
Perfect, great.
Yeah, so and if you have any other specific needs or get questions, please let us know.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Bosman and Commissioner McMurray especially, I wanted to um reach out to your, let you guys know that if you can think of any groups on the east side, I know it's kind of a different, uh not demographic, but just the geography's different and communities are different, so if you, you guys have been stakeholders on the east side a lot longer, and if you know of groups that I can either virtually talk to or even small pockets of people that I could, you know, if there's a neighborhood meeting or something like that, um please let me know, I'll, I'll do what I can.
Okay.
And I know it's something to ask too, but if you, then you could just shoot us an email if you have done so, or if we should, we're trying to keep, be somewhat structured about it and keep a list of who we've talked to and who we've reached out to, and then if you just know of a group but you don't want to reach out to them, let us know, and we can certainly do it. Obviously, a more personal ask is better to, to provide information, but happy to do it too.
And, and again, as, in our role as commissioners, we can't advocate for or against, um so we just have to be careful with our message, sending out what the facts are, if, if we are representing ourselves as a board commissioner.
Yeah, we'll send, um, working with Richard, just some kind of do's and don'ts, some easy do's and don'ts for you guys just to think about. Um again, it's, it's fairly simple in that, in, when you have your commissioner hat on, you really can provide information, but you can't advocate either way for it.
I would really appreciate that.
Yeah, good, that'll come soon too, like in the next.
So are, is, is there any action that we need to take at this point? I, I think part of today's um meeting was to, just to make sure that we're not missing our deadlines, we've got, uh, the fourteenth is, is the line in the sand for making sure that we're filed uh with the county for the ballot measure. Um I know you guys, sorry, last minute, I was talking to Mr. Davis yesterday and sent out um that statement, and, and Chris, correct me or not, but did you and Richard pass that um explanatory statement back and forth, and, and that's ready to go to the county as well?
Yeah, we provided, Richard is leading all of the education, or excuse me, the election um tasks, for lack of a better term, and deadlines, but he is working to make sure, we were able to provide some input into that explanatory statement, so um I know the chief was gonna check in and just make sure that we're not missing of those, because all the education won't be worth it if we don't get, meet the deadlines.
Right, right, so, all right, so there's, good, Kathy, sorry.
Well, on that again, um I talked to Dora Lee, and I was having a chance to talk this spot, but um she and I agreed that I should chair the, the um four committee. So that, I know that, see that's on a line that you have to know and be ready to.
Right, so, yes, that, that would be our, our sort of next, um is there anything else on the levy lid lift that uh um, hopefully that's not my message about unstable internet. Um is there anything else on the levy lid lift that we need to address before we move on to the committees?
Nothing from my end.
Okay, Chief, all right.
No.
Um so then we move on to the appointment of the pro and con committees, um we'll probably start with the con committee, because I have not heard of anyone coming forward opposing this, although, you know, maybe people aren't paying attention, or they're just all in favor of it, but uh, uh we have reached out, I think, in at least three of the ways that we are required by statute to do, and we have a form to fill out that says that we have done that, and we will forward that to the county. Um so as far as the, the pro committee, um our good friend and long-term advocate Kathy Berg is with us today, and, and um I would suggest that, that we appoint her as the chair of the pro committee, um Scott Brown has also offered his services um to assist with that, um and then not to be listed um in the voter's pamphlet would be Dora Lee, and um she is.
She will sign, she will, she'll have helped me write my portion, and it's her portion, and she will sign, I talked her into it this morning.
Oh, okay, okay, so she's, she's obvi, also involved with the uh library district formation and, and ballot measure that's gonna be coming up, um very involved in the community, and so I'll, I'll let you guys sort that out, but as, as far as we're concerned, it's, it's Kathy and Scott and, and Dora Lee, if she so chooses to sign on, otherwise um we, we, we need a maximum of three, which we've, we've met that, um we've tried to reach out to some other individuals and, and haven't heard back, so I think we'll, we'll be fine going with that, so um I think just making sure Scott and Kathy that all that information and, and actually fillable forms are on the county's website, if, if you go to that long HTTP WWW dot whatever, um and even on that, I, I couldn't actually connect to the link, I had to type it in manually, but it sends you to the county and then gets you to those fillable forms and, and gives you the deadlines, uh which I believe is the nineteenth that that statement has to be sent in, and I, I believe it's a fillable form, once you get that typed out, you can hit send, and it, and it will go to the county, or do you have to physically deliver that? I, I don't, I'm, I'm not aware of that.
That's why, why I appointed myself chair, so I can learn all this stuff and, and be sure we get it done.
It's, it's an attachment to, you can attach it to an email, and send it to elections at county, at, at the county.
So I, I think between the, the, the three of you tech savvy people, we can make sure that we get that to them by the nineteenth, um and then there's a, there's a rebuttal um timeframe as well. Um I assume that if, if you're on a pro committee and someone writes a con statement, that the pro committee would be notified, um and then they have a, a certain period of time um to rebut a, an opposing opinion, I, I doubt that we're gonna see that, but we make sure that we stay on top of that to, uh to be able to respond if needed.
Yes, all those, all those deadlines are included um at the county auditors, uh or at the elections website. Um Commissioner Ansel, I didn't know, do we want to, you want to make a motion to appoint the pro committee since we have interested individuals?
Yes, yes, so I, I would, I would move um to establish the pro committee with Kathy Berg as chair, Scott Brown as a participant, and, and Dora Lee, if she is ready, willing, and able, otherwise she can, she can be a non-signing participant to help develop that message.
Okay.
Any further discussion or comments? All in favor?
I.
So that pro committee is officially formed, um and um if you need any help finding the information or whatever, please make sure you get ahold of uh our administrative team and, and or Chris or whoever, and, and do not miss those deadlines, please, please, please. Um so I think that's it. It's, if uh, I don't know that there's anything else that we, we need to address, so I'm excited that we're, we're finally moving forward, I, I think all of the work that's been done up to this point, both um in the RFA stuff as well as our financial analysis and our messaging team is, is um moving along positively and, and uh getting this message out is super important, because it's, it's what's going to get us to the next level that we've been, we've been trying to get to for a long time, so um I'm, I'm super excited, so if anyone has anything else before we go, Rich, oh Kathy, did you have, yeah, of course.
My email address is kathyberg@comcast.net, if, if Scott and Chris would be in touch with me and let me get that into my system, that would be very much appreciated.
I will, I will loop all of you into an email as there's beneficial action taken by the board, I'll, I'll email you to give you all each other these contact information.
Very good, thank you.
Okay, uh Rich Bosman, any comments?
Uh I've already heard one question, and I'm sure we will address it in the frequently asked uh FAQ part, is the difference between this and the EMS levy? That's something that needs clarification, and then the age-old question in the northeast part of the county is the difference between North Wacom and Linden Fire, you know, so the emphasis on the area we cover and we are different and essential, but that is always a conflicting or confusing situation for taxpayers up here. That's it.
Great, thank you, good suggestions.
Kimberly, anything on your end? Scott?
Nothing, uh been very quiet on the home front here.
Well, that's, that's a good thing. Um Scott Brown, do you have anything for us? I, I, I'm hoping that District Four's uh meeting yesterday was a relief for you and all, so.
Uh yeah, it was good, uh we are getting behind, uh on board with supporting uh that levy, because then South Wacom, District Twenty-One and District Four will all be going for the same, so it's gonna be a lot easier to, you know, endorse and advertise and communicate with the public when it, when all three are doing the same rate, so uh things are looking promising, so thank you for all the work.
Yeah, appreciate it. Chief Ward, anything from your end? Crickets. Again, well, so we're, we're talking about sending out um these little cards or whatever to the, to the line people, and obviously, again, when they're on duty, they're not allowed to advocate for or against, um but they can educate and, and hopefully we'll have like a, a, a one sheet or a postcard or business card or something that refers them to our website and our administration and our, our people, so, uh because, you know, they're the people out on the street, and I'm sure that uh from my past experience, people will ask questions um when you're, when you're out. from my past experience, people will ask questions when you're, when you're out there. And so we just probably be very important, Chris, that we be able to get that do's and don'ts message that the chief can send out to all personnel as we move forward in this process and probably sooner than, than later now that we're filing with the county, so.
For sure.
All right. Thank you, everyone, for your attendance today. Appreciate all your efforts. And we have a, another regular meeting coming up next week. So we'll, we'll see you all then. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. All in favor? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you for your time, everyone.